Meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
The motion for the approval of the minutes of the February 11th, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Motion for the acceptance of the minutes of the February 18th, 2020 budget workshop.
So moved. Second.
We'll do second discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Public forum for this evening? None? Okay. We'll move on to presentations for this evening. We will have Frank Mulholland and David Brownstein, my brother's keeper.
Good evening, everybody. Throughout the year, we're happy to have the opportunity to present to you some of the work that we're doing through the My Brothers Keeper Grant and the Family and Community Engagement Project. And tonight, I'm happy to have two people representing a pretty interesting and important development in Ellenville. We've actually been with Wild Earth Inc., it started last year, and we are reaching kids through outdoor education in ways we haven't done before. So I'm happy to give you direct information on that from David Brownstein, the CEO, and Dustin Lambretto, who's a program manager. David?
I'm really pleased to be here, and I'm really grateful to be here and grateful to Frank for welcoming me into Ellenville, and to Mr. Spinelli and Ms. Ie and Ms. Urbina, Ms. Wiles, for welcoming Wild Earth. We start everything at Wild Earth with gratitude. In fact, this is a rendering of a huge banner that flies in Kingston middle schools right now, so the kids come in and they think about what are we grateful for today? You think it helps ground everyone in the same experience. So I'm really grateful to have been invited here and to be able to present Wild Earth to you. It's an organization I founded about 17 years ago with some other folks. But before getting too deep into that, I'd love to ask you, how were you connected to nature as a child? How did you play in the woods? That's not a rhetorical question. This is a participation experience. How were you connected?
Outside all the time.
In what way?
In what way? Just running around the neighborhood and wherever that took me to. I happened to live across from a pond, and there was a creek in the backyard, and all of it was very interesting. And it was a time when, you know, you went out after breakfast and didn't come home until dinner, and your mother didn't worry. So that was helpful, too.
Yeah. You played right into my hand. Thank you very much. Who else?
You got up, you went and played, I went and played stickball all day with our friends in the sandlot, and that's what you did, until, as Iris said, until dinnertime.
Right, right. My story was similar. We got off, I just remember getting, I lived in a cul-de-sac, right in a suburban neighborhood. You know, everyone kind of lived on a little quarter acre, and the bus dropped us off, and we lived in a cul-de-sac at the end of town, and, you know, they dropped you off the bus, and you just threw your bag down, and you just played until it was dark, and then the parents would start calling their kids in for dinner. But you played as long as you possibly could, and in the summer, you would just go back out again till like 10 o'clock at night, right? Is that a familiar story to some of you?
Ring of Elysium. Played Ring of Elysium.
Ring of Elysium.
I didn't see.
Even after.
Right, and then, you know, we painted the bases on the blacktop, and that was the baseball field, and we painted the touchdowns, and we just played.
Yeah.
Right? That's not happening so much anymore. I probably don't have to tell you that. Kids are not really playing in the woods anymore, certainly. Many are not going outside at all. They're not only disconnected from the earth, but also from themselves and each other, right? And how is that? You know, they tell you that you're more connected, but the truth is, this is not more connection. And so what we find is there's a pseudo-connection of kids feeling like they are connected to each other, but the cellphones make it really, really difficult and put a huge burden, the social media puts a huge burden and demand on kids to be on all the time. And precious little time is spent in any sense of community. No matter how close we may live to each other, we're more isolated than ever before. And in our extremely busy lives, we know that we and our kids need to unplug, and slow down, and connect, right? That true for most of you? Right? It's our problem, too, right? It's not just the kids' problem. We're always on and always connected, and it actually creates disconnection. So about 17 years ago, you know, several parents saw that this was happening to our kids, and we started to take them back outside. And this isn't, this is in High Falls. That's the gunks that, you know, if you kept going down there, you'd run into Ellenville, right? If you kept going to the right, you'd just run into Ellenville there, you know, about 10 miles. So we started taking kids into the woods, and we started with a summer camp, just kids getting back outside. And you can see, they've kind of thrown, put mud all over their faces and are just having a great time just splashing around in the water. You can't make up those faces. These are kids who are just playing and enjoying being outside. These are full days outside in the summer. We run six weeks of summer camp where we have no buildings. We're out in the rain, we're out in the sun. That's our group of our teens who've just camouflaged themselves and played scout games. That's what empowered girls look like at New Paltz, at Wild Earth. We make fire, we practice primitive skills and other things that give kids confidence. And our recipe is pretty simple. It's all outside all the time, right? Just like you said, we remind them that you can be outside all the time. And we use something called the art of questioning. So we don't normally give kids answers, we ask them questions. Because there's so much to explore outside, they, you know, there's so much mystery out there, and very often, we don't know the answers anyway. So we ask the same questions, like, you know, "What kind of tree is that?" "I don't know." "What do you see?" "What does the bark look like?" "What do the leaves look like?" And we'll see how far they go. Like, some kids will say like, "I don't know," and then they'll move on, and we just let them move on. And some of them will say like, "I don't know, the leaves look like this. Can I see a leaf? Can I take a leaf?" And who knows? That kid may want to go into a book that we have to see, like, maybe identify that tree. And you know what happens when they identify something that they are curious about? They'll never forget that experience. And they'll never forget that information. So it's all outside all the time, it's the art of questioning, it's seemingly unstructured but very intentional structure in our program. And the other thing is that no one would ever be turned away for lack of funds. In 17 years, we haven't turned anybody away who couldn't afford our program. We've given away over $700,000 in the last 17 years. So what did we find? Well, we found that we couldn't offer enough Wild Earth. Parents wanted it, the kids loved it, and the more we built, the more people wanted it. The other thing we found is that not only did our kids want to be outside and on their phones and devices left, which we liked, but we also found that the kids who were doing this over years, and this was the first 10 years, was kind of like a big experiment, what was happening to the kids who were doing this, not only in the summer, but on the weekends and after school and things like that? What was happening to those kids? Well, what we found was, they were building a lot of inner character. They had a lot of confidence, strong self-esteem, a lot of empathy and sense of belonging. They also had improved social and emotional health. They were the kind of kids who would look you in the eye if they met you, they would shake your hand, they'd look you in the eye. They were really confident in themselves because they had met a lot of challenges out in the woods, you know? When it rains all day in the woods and a kid spends six hours outside in the rain, that kid is never, ever concerned about rain again. Because they realize that it's not going to hurt them. And the other thing we found was that our participants were becoming natural leaders in their friend groups, and they were really, really excited about giving back and service to our community. We have about 90 instructors for our summer camp, we have about 500 kids at summer camp, and of those 90 instructors who meet those kids, probably half of them are kids who have been through the program. So we bring the kids back in, and they end up having summer jobs and other things like that at Wild Earth. So that's the story of the first part of what Wild Earth was. They were just paid for service programs. Any parent could sign up, and you can have that for your kid. And if you couldn't afford it, Wild Earth would help treat you. So what happened? About eight years ago, our Board of Trustees were sitting around, we're a nonprofit, and our Board of Trustees were saying, "We're having such incredible results in our local community, but it's largely a privileged community. How about we start offering this to kids who may not have ever gone in the woods and may not, who really need this kind of programming?" So we began partnering with Kingston and the Kingston City School District. This is about six, seven years ago. And we started building programs there, and I'm going to show you a little video that's not perfectly tuned to the voices, but you'll get an idea. This is programming that's taking place in Kingston.
One, two, three. Wow!
Normally, I don't spend much time in nature.
I don't spend that much time in the woods.
I'm like that. I don't really go outside because now everyone's on their phones and electronics.
My mom doesn't really like this kind of stuff, so this is a different experience for me, and it feels, I feel like I'm at home.
There were a couple, I noticed, when they got off the bus, they had the body language and the facial expressions as if they were kind of too cool for a program like this, and it was this complete transformation within the first 10 minutes of the program.
What I like about the woods is that everything is peaceful. It's only wildlife, music of birds, beautifulness.
This isn't a Venus flytrap, it's something else.
I got a new best friend.
Does anyone want to like get close and take a look at it?
You mean me? I look like a turtle?
The ratios that we have allow us to connect with them. You're able to pause, you're able to feel their questions, and spend that time and build mentorship relationships with the students.
Do you notice anything?
I love the deer ears. Every one of you is going to get a rock. Get to know your stone.
We build into our curriculum things that go on from Wild Earth. Gives them the opportunity to be creative and allowing them to say, "Wow, I can do that," that gives them confidence.
Academic success stems from students that are centered and able to communicate who they are and how they see the world, and Wild Earth gives them the opportunity to do just that.
And by the end of the day, the difference we see in their behavior, every time, it makes my day.
Resess is a real challenge for many schools.
There's a lot of chaos at recess time.
So Wild Earth came in, and we now are running a guided recess program. Over 1,000 kids get that program once a week.
I think kids really, really gravitate towards guided recess. We're able to go out in the yard, we provide activities, games, field guides, to engage students in a way that they were not able to do in the past.
We also run an after-school program, a peer mentoring program, and we hope to add a summer camp component and a spring break component that will just further expand how much time the kids are getting out into the woods.
My parents and I don't have a lot of money, and I can just, I just go into nature, and I just feel like I just can let everything out, all my feelings and everything.
This field trip is the awesomest, greatest, coolest, adventurous field trip ever.
I love Wild Earth.
Yo amo Wild Earth.
Ami is Wild Earth's kebab al pati.
Nechna meheb Wild Earth.
Feel like I want to come here every day.
Wild Earth!
Well, unfortunately, the sound wasn't exactly tuned into the video, but you get the picture. And we started doing field trips in Kingston with every fifth and sixth grader, and there are 1,000 fifth and sixth graders in the city of Kingston, so it's full-day field trips for all of September and all of October, and then we go into guided recess. After our field trips, and we did those successfully, one of the principals said, "How else can you help?" And I said, "Well, where is the problem?" And they said, "Well, the problem's on the playground in recess." And we started a guided recess program. So our instructors are out on the recess ground for your school, every fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, every Wednesday sees Wild Earth. Seven Wild Earth instructors, Dustin? Five? Five Wild Earth instructors are out on your recess ground every Wednesday to meet every fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grader who comes outside. And fourth. Fifth? Fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth. So you can imagine, in the city, so we did this in Kingston for several years, and two years ago, Frank called and said, "I want to know more about what Wild Earth is doing." We met in our office, and we started piloting a program last spring to bring guided recess and after-school into Ellenville. And this year, we have a full year of programming that includes guided recess and after-school programming, and we'll go into full-day field trips starting end of April, beginning of May. So every fifth and sixth grader will be on Wild Earth's land for a full-day field trip. This is what guided recess looks like. We bring games out, this is called stump rope, that's about balance. We make tea, the kids. We're bringing back double dutch. That's some of our staff. Sometimes we'll join the game, there was problems on the basketball court, and they just said, "Would you guys come out of your activity and just join our basketball game?" And we do code of conduct and peacemaking on the basketball court. But most of it all is relationship building. That's the key to what's going on. Doesn't really make a difference what we're doing, except that our instructors, who are incredible role models, are building relationships with your kids and providing additional support to what's happening in the classroom. So this is what our Wild Earth programs for schools projects look like this year. In the Kingston middle schools, there's 2,200 students getting 144 program days. So that program has been going on for five years, and we've built it over the years. Each student gets 56 days of contact with Wild Earth. That's, it's a big deal. We're in the middle schools four days a week in Miller and Bailey. Now, in the middle, you're seeing Ellenville, fourth through eighth grade, 625 students approximately, 27 program days we're offering this year in Ellenville, with each student getting 18 days of contact. And then JFK Elementary is an elementary school in Kingston. So these are the three schools we're working on right now. In Kingston, there's two middle schools, Miller and Bailey. This is the program in Ellenville, this is my last slide. So we're 17 Wednesdays in late fall and early spring for all fifth to eighth graders. We do after-school adventures on those same Wednesdays for up to 24 sixth graders and 24 fifth graders who really want to join and have more Wild Earth that day. We're doing the Springing Into Nature Full Day in the Woods Field Trips at Wild Earth's new land in Carhonkson. We're planning those days now with Mr. Spinelli and Ms. Ie and Frank, and we invite you to come and see the program in action, anyone who would like to come and see what we're doing. The other thing we're doing is teacher collaboration. So we're meeting with fifth and sixth grade teachers to introduce the program to them so they know how we work with kids, and discuss and plan curriculum tie-ins, so what's happening in your classroom is experienced out in the woods, and we're finding ways to tie your curriculum to experiential ed. Would you keep these out? The other part of what's happening, and this is research that we've been doing, we're in our third year of research on the Kingston project because it's been out so long. And some of the results that you'll see in the report that you're getting is that we've had a 300% reduction in recess referrals on days that Wild Earth is at recess, improvement in peer relationships, confidence and empathy, and promoting class and school unity. And so with that, I'd love to ask if there are any questions on what we're doing, and yeah, anything at all. Please.
Just a quick question. So you talked about disconnecting kids from their phones when they come to do your day-long program. Do they have their phones?
No, no phones in the woods.
Thank you.
Come up here, come up here.
They don't bring them out during our after-school, fifth and sixth grade either. They just leave them in their backpack, and it hasn't even really come up.
So you're like, at the end of this, they can go on the show Running Wild with Bear Grylls, you know, you got them set, right?
They could. Yeah, the other thing they can do, which is really nice, is we have, you know, what we're going to be bringing in and putting in backpacks is our flyers about our summer camp, because many of the children in Ellen, we don't see a lot of Ellenville kids at our camps. So we want to welcome them to more Wild Earth. You guys are helping pay for some of Wild Earth, but we want to increase their engagement with us through summer camps and after-school, weekend programming.
Yeah, I think it's amazing, from what I saw, what you just showed on the slideshow, I think it's amazing that the skills that they develop by going out into the woods and the things that they, you know, they're quasi-survival skills when you're out in the woods, to learn how to start a fire and not to be afraid of the rain, as you said, stay out there. And one of the fascinating statistics that you put up, when we were kids, we were outside over seven to 10 hours a day. I saw your first statistic, kids are now inside over seven hours a day. It's quite a change, just from a generation.
Yep.
Anybody else? Iris?
When you do guided recess, that takes place during the school day?
We head over to the elementary for their fifth grade, and then the rest of our team is here for sixth, seventh, and eighth, yeah, during their recess periods.
And after-school is self-explanatory. When do your field trips take place?
Those start in the beginning of May, and it's five program days with the fifth, and then five program days with the sixth.
That's during the school day, or?
Yeah, yeah, one class per day is going to come out to our field trip.
Just like a regular offside field trip? We're providing the busing, we're taking them up about 10, 12 miles away into 135 acres of wilderness, so they will feel like they are so far from home.
Is this your second year working with the school?
Last year, we did a pilot program just in the spring, just to kind of see how it fit. So we worked with you probably seven or eight Wednesdays last year, and then with your support, we did the first year of programming, and this is kind of how it started in Kingston. We started small, we took, you know, small steps, and we went from working with fifth and sixth graders in one school, 250 kids, we'll be with 2,200 kids next year in Kingston.
Well, I hope this program expands. You know, certainly it looks like they're learning a lot and having a lot of fun at the same time. Just one question, I see you put up teacher collaboration. What's your buy-in from the teaching staff here?
It starts slowly, you know, as you can imagine, because we're coming in with like a little bit of a different pedagogy, and so we build that trust over time. So the first year, I would say, a lot of the Kingston teachers were like, "What's going on here? What are you doing?" The teachers went on the field trip, and they kind of were like, "Where's the discipline? We want more discipline," and things like that, and we discipline a little differently. And four years later, the teachers are asking us to come into the classroom. We're now in detention in Kingston, so we are supporting the school in talking to kids in detention and having them understand why or what happened, and helping them process what's going on here, and that, "Hey, you can't come to after-school today. You can't come to Wild Earth today." You know, and so we really, that's something that we'd like to grow into as there's more trust built, but we don't pretend like that happens quickly. It happens by earning trust, and so we're all about earning trust by just supporting what you're already doing in your school.
Anybody else? If not, thank you very much, and we wish you continued success.
Thank you very much.
And Frank, goes without saying, thank you for recognizing a great quality program and bringing it here and keeping it, you know, keeping the relationship fostered between the district and Wild Earth.
Thank you, Frank.
We will go on to reports, information, and correspondence for this evening. I attended the winter graduation last night with some of the board members, and it was a really nice program put on for the winter graduates, and they were very proud, I think. It was a very proud moment. I'd like to thank Mr. O'Connell for coming out and some of the other staff that was there as well last night, and it really showed the students that they care. Any other board members? Iris?
I just wanted to point out that we are looking for an Ulster County Bosse's board member, correct?
Yes.
And so I just wanted to let people know that if they're interested, you might want to expound a little more on it at some point, but I just wanted to remind you that there's a need for that, so.
Volunteers, or? Willie, did you just volunteer?
Pardon me?
Did you just volunteer?
Well, anyone out in the community is.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
John?
Yes, just want to let everybody know that it's that time of year for Hall of Fame People out in the community could look on the school website, there was a form there, you could see the athletic director. We'll get our committee going and meet for a couple of months and then make our selections, and of course, in October, have the 2020 Hall of Fame induction. It seems to get a little bigger and better every year. We just need people's support in making nominations of worthy candidates.
Thank you. Any other board members? Hey, if not, we will go on to our student representative for this evening.
First thing I'd like to address is the pep rally last Friday, Spirit Week. It was a success. We had a lot of involvement, and last Friday was not only the pep rally, but it was senior night for basketball. The pep rally really got us and the students really involved in everything, and we had a lot of support in senior night. It was emotional for the seniors, and we ended up winning against Tri Valley, so go Ellenville. And we have the Heat versus Magic game on the 24th. It's to support leukemia. All the money generated from the admission tickets and the raffles at halftime and everything will go to leukemia, so that's it.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, what's the date of the Heat-Magic game?
24th of March, correct?
March 24th.
Yeah, March 24th.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Superintendent Lisa Wiles.
So I just have two things this evening. I included in my report that on March 4th, from 5:00 to 7:00, the New York State Regents are holding a regional information meeting. The purpose of the meeting is to gather information regarding new high school diploma requirements that the state is considering. There's going to be a forum where board members and others can provide their input and, you know, provide information to the state on what, there's some five guided questions, I think, that'll be shared that evening. The board's encouraged to come. I'll be going, and I'll report back, you know, after the meeting. I also want to tell you that this Friday, February 28th, the New York State United Teachers will be having a group of people representative visiting our school district with two legislators. One will be Jen Metzger, and the other will be a representative from Brian Miller, their state senator in our Assemblyman. And the purpose of the visit is to showcase needs that the school district has with regard, specifically to support mental health services, where we're lacking because of a lack of funding, and also... funding, and also the arts. So they'll be coming in, and if the board members would like to come, they'll be arriving here at 9 o'clock on Friday for a roundtable discussion about the need of student support services throughout the district. And we'll have a guidance counselor and psychologist talking about the needs as they see it, as well as the principals. 9:45 to 10:30, they'll be doing a walk through the building, all three buildings, but headed towards the arts wing. And then from 10:30 to 11:15, there'll be a discussion about how the lack of funding, the foundation aid formula not being able to run, has had an impact on the arts and funding here. I really appreciate the fact that NICE Ed's taking on this initiative and visiting other schools. They're coming not only to Ellenville, but my understanding is they'll be visiting Kingston after Ellenville. It reminds me of last year when the Alliance for Quality Education visited the school with a Regent, if you remember, and also legislatures. And I think it's really important that we all, all the stakeholders in schools, NICE Ed, administration, students, especially the student voice, you know, in addition to all the organizations, really speak up about this foundation aid formula and how it is, how we've been underfunded. We're short, Ellenville is short $4 million over the last, you know, years because the foundation formula hasn't been running. And if you think about what we could do with those types of funds, not only adding to the support services and mental health services that are so needed, but also expanding the arts, also keeping the tax levy down, it's a lot that could be done here, having more programs like Wild Earth, you know, supplement our programs, more field trips like that. There's so much to be done, and with the tax cap and the limited state aid that we're getting, you know, we're always behind the eight ball here, using our funds, and really, I say it, and I'm not going to stop saying it until I'm retired, just because you live in the ZIP code 12428 or related does not mean that you should have less than ZIP codes like Scarsdale and, you know, others. And we all have to come together. I really appreciate the fact Mr. Alt House brought this forward. We'll be able to, you know, walk NICE Ed representatives through our buildings and show them what we have, the positives, but also what our needs are, and...
What day is that going to be?
Friday, 9 o'clock. You can come to the central...
This Friday?
Yep, through the central office. If you're so inclined, the board's definitely welcome to be here. We'll be coming down to the media center to have the roundtable to start off with. So I think we all need to be more vocal. I know Mr. Burns talked about writing a letter to State Ed. Jen Metzger is a big advocate of public education, and we're lucky that she, you know, speaks up for us, but she's one person amongst many, and the more the state hears... You know, I remember years ago, I'm sorry, I'm going to stop, but I remember years ago when they had the gap elimination aid, and we lost $2.5 million between the PTO and the teachers and the staff and the students and the parents. We jammed up the legislators' fax machines, if you remember. They called the school and said, "Stop sending faxes. We get it, we get it," which is good, but they didn't totally get it because we're still in this position, you know, five to 10 years later. So, you know, we want the equity, and we want them to do what's right. We're asked to do more with the less every year. We're at our tipping point. There's not much more we can do with less, and I think we've done a very good job at it, but it's time for them, you know, to fund us. And I get the governor says, "Well, you have increases, and you have more money, and we have more need," and nobody's listening to the amount of need that our communities have. And, you know, we have to keep our voices united, and we have to keep going with our message. So I appreciate the fact to have another session where we can do that with an important stakeholder in the district. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Napoli.
Thank you. I have many reports. I'm not going to talk about all of them, but I will be happy to entertain any questions anyone has, but there are a couple of things that I would like to point out. We're starting again, the applications are out for bags, spring hunger. We're working again with People's Place to send bags home over spring break. We're also working on starting up the backpack program with the assistance of People's Place. We're hoping to do 25 backpacks home starting in a couple of weeks. And I addressed some of the questions that were presented to me at the last budget workshop. One of them, I just completed today, I'll briefly talk about, I was asked about the cost of coach buses. The cost of coach buses has gone up since 2018, when I last did this analysis. The average, the trip to Connecticut is up roughly $540. We reached out to the owner of the coach bus company. His insurance has gone up quite a bit, and the cost of labor for coach bus drivers has increased considerably as well. He's having a hard time getting coach drivers, so he's got to pay them a little bit more. I'll actually include this report in my next budget report, but I just want to let you know that I have some data on that.
Mr. Napoli, no buses cost $10,000 for a field trip. Is that accurate?
That is correct. So I will tell you that Connecticut, what is that there?
Aquarium.
Aquarium. The aquarium, thank you. In 2018, it was $930. In 2020, the cost would be $1,470.
We're not going to...
And we haven't gone to Carnegie Hall in how many years?
Four, five years.
I don't, yeah, it's been quite some time.
So there's no field trips that are costing us $10,000?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Angela Urbina Medina.
No, no report this evening.
Thank you. Move on to personnel resolutions. Under 6.1, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that the resignation of Rodrigo Castro, boys varsity track assistant coach, be accepted effective February 12, 2020.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 6.2, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that the Board of Education thus hereby approve the separation agreement and release for employee number 0114-2020, effective January 14, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Resignation, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that the Board of Education thus hereby accept the resignation of Myron Logan, cleaner, effective January 14, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.4, tenure appointment. Upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that Carl...
Buetti.
Buetti, who holds a professional New York State certificate in the area of English, two speakers of other languages, and a permanent New York State certificate in the area of social studies, grades 7, 12, and who upon completing a satisfactory probationary period ending April 17, 2020, be granted tenure in the area of English as a second language, effective April 17, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 6.5, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that Naceri Luis Rivera's request for an extension of unpaid leave of absence for child rearing be granted through June 30, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 6.6, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that Cherish Berry, who holds a professional New York State certificate in the area of English, two speakers of other languages, and a permanent New York State certificate in the area of pre-K, kindergarten in grades 1 through 6, be appointed to a three-year probationary position of English, two speakers of other languages, teacher, and in the tenure area of English as a second language, effective February 26, 2020 through February 26, 2023, at a contractual rate of $91,427, prorated Step 10, Bachelors plus 66 plus Masters. Be it further resolved to the extent applicable under Education Law Section 3012-D and the Accompanying Commissioners Regulations, in order to be considered for tenure, Cherish Berry must have received the APPR rating of effective or highly effective in two of the three probationary years and must not receive an ineffective in the final year.
So moved.
Second.
Could you explain why she has three years instead of the traditional four years?
Yes, she's been a long-term sub in the district for one year, so she's been granted JREMA credit.
Thank you.
What is it called?
JREMA credit, and Ms. Berry's also been tenured before also, so that would qualify her for a three-year probationary.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.7, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that following salary reclassification, graduate credits in degrees...
Motion to move the list.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 6.8, upon the recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that based upon the selections made by the mentor team, which consists of 51% teachers appointed by the ETS RPA, and the board approves the following mentors at an annual stipend of $1,000 prorated contingent on required training. There are three or four.
Four.
The list's been moved?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Policy resolutions for this evening? 7.1.
Motion to move 7-1 and 7-2.
Second.
7-1, 7-2, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Under budget resolutions for this evening?
Motion to move 8-1, 8-2.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Under education, student IEPs?
Motion to move 9-1, 9-2, and 9-3.
It's been moved for 9-1, 9-2, and 9-3. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Under 10, instruction resolution.
Mr. President, could I ask a favor here, please? I don't know if we could amend that. I see there's a memorial award here, and I really think that we should read that award since someone's donating money, so if we could go back and read 9-3 so that people know what it is. If not...
I'll second. I think I seconded the...
I will discuss what it is. It is a memorial award, Jack M. Lorna, in the amount of $200, and it's being established pursuant to the terms and criteria designated by the donor and amended as attached.
Thank you.
10.1, Capitol Construction Project. Resolve that the Board of Education hereby appoints the firm of CPL architects, engineers, landscape architects, surveyors, DBC CPL to serve as the district's architects for the Capitol Construction Project, approved by the voters on December 3, 2019, not to exceed the amount of $1,083,062... Excuse me, $1,083,06,000 and... I got it all wrong, I can't see it.
So moved.
Second.
You got two decimal points in there. Yeah, all right, so it's moved. I can't see it. I'll enlarge it. Now I can see it.
Use it out.
Ah, but there's two... Yeah, I did, I just enlarged it. There's two decimal points there that should not be there.
That's $1,083,062.50.
Ah, that's what I thought it was, but I see these two periods. That throws me off.
It's one period at the end of a sentence.
You can't put down the number.
So moved.
Because you got dollars.
Let's not talk about this.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion besides mine?
I think it's zeros.
It was. You got to have zeros on the end of it. You can't just put a number and then put a period anywhere you feel like it. It's like an exclamation point. I'm putting one here, I'm putting one here. All right, any other discussion?
Put an exclamation point next to it.
All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. You had me enlarge the screen like 10 times the size.
Where are your glasses?
I know, they're right here. They should be on. Under other...
Mr. President, motion to move 11-1 through 11-3.
Moved 11-1 to 11-3. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Next, well, we have a meeting on March 3, correct?
Yep. Budget workshop.
Yeah, we have a budget workshop on March 3, and then our next regular meeting is scheduled for March 10. Anything that any member wants to see on the agenda for the March 10 meeting? No? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Word.